All right, it is Monday, July 20. We have a quorum of all the board members present. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Trophy Club Municipal District, MUD number one, to order at 6:30 on the nose. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear the comments on a specific agenda items prior to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time allotted and determined by the president or presiding officer. Citizens comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. Lori, do we have any citizens comments?
No, sir.
All right. Let's move on then to reports and updates. This is Bill was just talking about a little bit of a different ordering of things and staff has provided all those reports. Anybody have any questions or I will turn it over to Alan for staff reports if there are any questions? And by the way, if you just raise your hand, that's kind of the best way to do it so I can see it.
I would like to note, the variance report is now involved with the finance reports. So if y'all are looking for that.
No comments? Questions? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion. I guess we don't need a motion on this one, just reports, right? So we're good.
Yes, sir.
No questions? Bill Rose, no questions about the finance report?
I don't think so. I have to go, let me go back and see my, check my comments section.
Check your comments section. Okay.
Take the computer a while to get there. No, no.
Apparently the president.
Say that again?
I said apparently the president is glutton for punishment.
Yeah, I have 75 items highlighted.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll move on since that wasn't one of the 75.
Nope, nope, I got first question down, way down the list.
Consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Directors and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider and take appropriate action to approve the consent agenda. One, June 2020 financial, combined financials. B, June 15, 20, regular minute, meeting minutes. C, tax collection reports, third quarter fiscal year 2020. D, quarterly investment report, third quarter fiscal year 2020. And E, acting general manager designation. Mr. Rose?
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through E.
I have a second.
I second.
Mark had his hand up first, so motion by Director Rose. Yeah, Director Rose and seconded by Mark to approve the consent agenda items A through E. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Regular session. Okay, consider and take appropriate action to approve amendment by a district information form, including updated district boundary description and map that incorporates the annexed property. Staff.
So in December 2019, the board directed staff to go ahead and work on updating a legal description in the district boundaries to include everything that was annexed previously. This was completed, but it hadn't been presented to the board because of the COVID-19. And so it doesn't look like we're going to be coming back live for a while, so we're wanting to go ahead and get this on the agenda to get it approved and so we can get the map updated and published. Do we have any questions?
I do.
Bill? Yes, sir.
I'm on page 172 of the packet. And there's this section called South Parcel. And then on page 178 of the packet, there's one called Track 9. And my question is, what are these? Are these save and accept? I found one that said save and accept. And so it was like, what, what are, why are these set apart? And what's the difference between those and save and accept?
So this is Tony, and I haven't studied this, but I think the answer to your, well, let me first address the easy one, which is a save and accept is just the surveyor's terms for carving out a description. So for instance, if there was a 10 acre track, but one acre of that was not included, rather than perform a new survey for the nine acre net area, it was, it's much more efficient and less costly just to do the 10 acre and save and accept the one acre. So it saves you from doing an on the ground survey description. So that's the purpose of a save and accept. And similarly, rather than do a new on the ground survey or description for a tract the size of the district, which I would guess would be $50,000 or $60,000, by using existing legal descriptions for individual tracts and combining those, you can end up with a description of the lands within the district by using existing surveys and descriptions for individual tracts and combining them, rather than starting with a new on the ground, brand new survey, which would be very, very expensive.
Okay, well, yeah, I kind of, I kind of, you know, I wasn't sure about, I kind of, I figured out the save and accept was probably the hole in the donut or the holes in the Swiss cheese. But then we had this South Track and Track 9. And so I just, I just wanted to make sure that those were all viable the way they were presented there.
Yeah, there's no problem with you utilizing multiple property descriptions to describe the lands in the district, which I think is what's been done here by the surveyor.
Okay. That's all I had.
Any other discussion? Okay, I will entertain a motion. Don't all speak at once.
I'll do the easy one.
All right, Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve amendment to the district information form, including updated district boundary description and map that incorporates the annexed property, we'll say as presented in the packet for today's meeting. I think that'll do it.
So we have a motion by Director Rose to approve the amendment of the district information, including updated boundary description and map incorporates an annexed property as presented in the deck. Do we have a second? Kelly, second, thank you. Any other further discussion?
As an aside, this is Tony, I'm not sure if staff has heard yet, but I received a call from a lawyer at the Winstead firm in Dallas, probably two weeks ago, who said that he was representing a landowner who desired to annex some lands into the district. Again, just a heads up, I'm not sure if staff has heard from that property owner yet.
Thank you, Tony.
Tony, do you know if it was a property near Churchill? Was it a developer where they're trying to put 43 lots on a, on Trophy Park?
My impression was it was a smaller piece of dirt. And I asked why, and they said they, for services, they desired it to be annexed. But we didn't get into, I gave them contact information for the district staff and told them about the district's requirements for annexations, and I didn't get any details, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I can tell you that there are, there's one property that's owned by a couple of landowners, one is three acres, another one's about eight and a, five and a half, six acres, that are not in the district, that a developers reached out to the town, went to the P&amp;Z, it was the client, is going to council on the 28 to, to put 43 homes in that eight and a half acres. There's also a number of other properties that have been off well properties where they have cap oil wells that, that are attempting now to be sold as well. And so they're also not in the district, so we will likely be getting a number of these requests, probably eight or nine of those.
Yeah, on the oil wells, right Greg?
So I will just say, this staff has been contacted about the oil wells and the two parcels over by Churchill Downs.
Okay.
Any further discussion about the motion presented by Director Rose, seconded by Kelly? All right, if not, all those in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Item four. Consider and take appropriate action to approve standard utility agreement with Texas Department of Transportation regarding sanitary sewer line adjustments and relocations across State 114, State Route 114, and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary agreement. Alan, you want to speak to that?
So on the board approved an agreement with the city of South Lake in February 2020 for the adjustment relocation of sewer lines associated with a text dot project along 114, where they're widening some turn lanes or service road lanes. Part of the project includes text dot reimbursing the district. And this document is the agreement between the district and text dot for us to receive the funds and then turn around and provide those funds to South Lake as part of their agreement. And this is a pass through cost text dot, it's paying for these relocations.
Questions? Comments? Boy, you guys are quiet tonight. You never were this quiet when we had President Wilson on staff, but that's good. All right, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion. Mark?
I make a motion to accept the text dot utility agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation regarding sanitary sewer line adjustments and relocations across State Highway 114 and authorize general manager to execute the necessary agreement as per the staff report.
Do a second. Kelly, second? Okay. So Mark, the motion to approve the standard utility agreement, Texas Department of Transportation regarding the sanitary sewer lines, adjustments and relocations, State Highway 114, authorize general manager to execute the necessary documents as presented in the deck, that was seconded by Kelly. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your, right? It is unanimous. Item five. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the approval of requests for qualifications for engineering services. Alan, do you have comments on that?
Directors, this happened before I started, but back in, I believe it was February or March, Mike, I don't remember the date, there was some discussion where the board had directed staff to go ahead and do a request for qualifications for a separate engineering firm. Staff advertised for that RFQ on the 21st and 28th. We all sat down and reviewed these firms. One was Garber, one was Half Associates, who we currently have, are utilizing, and Peloton Land Solutions. After we scored these firms, Half Associates ended up ranking the highest, Garber was second, and Peloton was third. So I know that some of the questions before were whether or not there was enough bandwidth of our current engineering firm. I have worked with a few of these consulting engineers that we have on staff or they have on staff at Half and Associates. I've met with them, met with their group, and have communicated the desire for them to be utilized in whatever aspect that we're looking for as far as the group. So they have adequate staffing, they have adequate experience, and looking at long-term asset management and our GIS platform and what we're trying to do from a long-term perspective, all of the staff agrees that it would be in our best interest to remain with them. However, if the board is adamant to have a second, or I guess it'd be a third firm, then Garber would be the second qualified from our perspective.
So when you brought that, those discussions up, Alan, to Half, they had no concerns? Is that what I heard you say?
Not at all. Not at all. And actually, the majority of everything that we do, Half has staff internally that can handle all of that, where a lot of these firms, they may piece out a lot of this external work, Peloton, the majority of theirs is land development. I've worked with Peloton before, but they're more land development, creations of muds, a lot of property. Garber is a, is a good firm, I've worked with them before myself, but the Half Associates, again, they just scored higher. And it's our recommendation to just continue with Half and Associates. They have a tenured individual that's worked in multiple public works projects, and they understand what we're trying to do long-term of explaining the vision for us, and they can handle the workload.
Director Rose?
Are we looking to name a primary or just, because, I mean, we use multiple, kind of use multiple firms now? And so I didn't know whether we were looking to name a primary or simply to motion to continue the utilization? And then I do have a question, Tignol Perkins did not respond?
We have not seen anything, no.
Okay.
And
Go ahead.
Our recommendation is to just continue utilizing Half Associates. Yes, we still have CPNY on, they're, they're working with a few of the remaining items for the wastewater treatment plant, they didn't submit either. Again, I've discussed in detail and depth with our project manager and some of the folks that are vice presidents over there and let them know and understand what we're trying to do, and they seem to have adequate staffing to take care of our needs.
So is the term primary out of order, or can, or you just want to say continue utilizing?
That's, I would defer to Tony, but I think that's probably sufficient.
Okay. Have a motion?
Director Rose, thank you.
I move that the district continue to utilize Half Associates as engineer for the district.
Director Rose moves to continue with Half and Associates for the district. Do we have a second? Greg, Greg Wilson, Director Wilson seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item six. Consider and take appropriate action to approve task order with Half and Associates for water line rehabilitation project located on Carnoustie and Chimney Rock at the cost not to exceed $28,400 and authorize general manager to execute the necessary documents.
Directors, this is one, this is one of our annual capital improvement projects, water line replacement program. It's roughly 2,800 linear feet of water line that's going to be replaced at these two locations. This is for the design only, once we get the design done and taken care of, we'll bid and advertise and we'll bring back the approval for the contractor at a later date.
So has that contractor been determined yet, or is that?
No, sir. What we're going to do first is we're going to take care of the design of these plans, and then this agreement right here with Half includes the bidding and construction phase services. Once that's done and completed, then we'll bring back the contractor for awarding that to you.
Bill?
This, this particular project, is it in conjunction with the town's project for paving, or is this separate?
This is separate. So staff has reached out to the town, they have obtained a list, but there's nothing defined yet, and this is staff's recommendation to go ahead and proceed forward with this. We tried to nail them down as far as what they were thinking about doing this next budget year, but we have not been able to obtain any solid locations yet.
Okay, did they, were these, were these streets originally on any type of forecast by the town? No, okay. But we're at the point where this is the asbestos AC pipe, and it's needing repair, correct, repair and replacement? Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions for Alan and/or Mike? All right?
So I will just tell the board on this, the Carnoustie part, we started a little bit of this last year, so basically it's to finish up what we did not replace on Carnoustie, and then move over to Chimney Rock and do that, because that's one of our higher main break streets over there.
The, our line's going to be not under the street, correct? It's going to be along the street?
Correct.
That's the understanding at this point?
That's correct. It, the existing line is outside of the back of curb right now, you do have some area where we have to cross the existing pavement. There's a couple of maps that we provided for you just for general locations.
Yeah, I didn't catch the crossings, but that's okay.
How big a project? How long are these lines?
2,800 linear feet total.
And I do have another question. One of the things in the building and construction phase services says prepare record drawings. Are those the same as, as built when they complete?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve task order with Half Associates for water line rehabilitation projects located at Carnoustie and Chimney Rock at a cost not to exceed $28,400 and authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents.
Seconded by Bill, that was the motion by Secretary Treasurer Castingley approving or authorizing task order and Half Associates for the water line rehabilitation projects located at Carnoustie and Chimney Rock at a cost not to exceed 28,004. And again, Bill seconded that motion. There are no other comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item seven. Consider and take appropriate action to approve lease with Kiasera for copier printer services for fiscal year 2021 and authorize general manager to execute the lease. Staff?
You got this one?
I got this one. Currently, we have a five-year lease with Keys here, with our copier right now, our main copier, that is going to be terminating on October. We have an opportunity to go ahead and create a new lease if we want to before October with no additional costs, which is here, went ahead and priced out versus Canon, and it will actually be cheaper for the district to go ahead and move forward with, do another five-year lease with Keys here.
We did look at other options, is what you're saying, Stephen?
That's correct. Looked at other pricing options on there, and Keys here, it'd be the cheaper option for us. And with the lease, we have the maintenance agreement with the lease, the next five years, all toner, all maintenance on the copiers, maintenance covered, certainly.
Is there capability difference? Or are you, are we comparing apples to apples? When you compare the Canon to the Kia Sera?
Yes, so both the units are exactly the same, which is 40 copies per minute, maintenance is five years, everything's identical. Really what it comes down to is the base price and then the per copy price for the maintenance.
Have we been happy with their services?
Yes. The unit we have now, it's five years old, it's running a little bit slow just as far as the warm-up and everything, but for the overall, you know, other than a minor, you know, imaging here, roller here, it's been really good unit for us. So we want to go ahead and continue with another, newer unit here, identical to what we have now. Difference is with this new unit, something we were interested in is to add the badge feature, so now security feature where any employee can go up there and swipe their badge, go ahead and release all their print jobs. We are looking to try to help the district a little bit more is get rid of all the office printers and move everything to the main printer. So the badge will help keep everything in queue and security feature for it.
Mark, did I see you raising your hand, question?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was looking at and what I thought that, I was going to ask with that was what the security feature was that was listed in the, in the report. And that's what I expected.
Stephen, is the base cost the cumulative sum of the monthly rentals over a five-year period?
That is correct, correct. The lease base is going to be the principal of the monthly plus residual for, for each month, that'd be the total cost. And then the estimated copy cost is just per copy, what we estimate, the black copies are going to be and the white, the color copies are going to be.
So Stephen, did I say you, you're looking to use this piece of equipment for all printing from the, for the office?
Correct, we're going to move that way to get rid of some of the local desktop printers, just because of the ink, most of the pricing of the printing is the ink itself, so it'd be financially fiscal for us to go ahead and move forward with everything and kind of get rid of the, the desktop ones and move everything to the main copier.
So obviously, this piece of equipment has the capabilities to do that, right?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Mark.
Jumped in, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I was just trying to get, get the numbers off the, it wasn't repeated up at the, all right, back up here. Sorry, I was trying to get the cost for the motion. Come on.
17,741.69.
Yeah.
17,741 dollars and 69 cents.
For five years.
Although that's just an estimate, your, your actual cost will be based on the number of printed.
Usage.
Okay. You may not want to frame your motion in those terms.
I would like to make a motion that we threw a lease with Kiasera for a copier printer service for the fiscal year 2021 for five years with an estimated cost of $17,741.69, which could, you know, is an estimate for a period of five years.
Motion by Vice President Chapman to approve the lease with Kiasera for our copier printer service for fiscal year 2021. In their motion, the estimate was for 17,741.69, four or five years.
That's the base cost.
Say that again? Seconded by Director Rose. Discussion? All those in favor, show your hand. It is unanimous. Item eight. Discussion and possible action regarding district payment and billing policies impacted by Discussion and possible action regarding district payment and billing policies impacted by COVID-19. Uh, Director Rose, I will let you take this one on.
Okay, I was, uh, just reflecting back on, uh, our prior action to, uh, go back to initiating disconnects and, and framing putting, putting an end to the situation we're currently in. And I looked at the, uh, what's going on with COVID in the area. And it caused me to question whether that's uh, the correct thing to do at the current time or whether we should consider delaying it. Uh, I don't know. Don't know exactly about how the optics should play out at this point. Nor do I know exactly where we're at, uh, with relation to, uh, costs, a number of people that are involved in the program or who are involved in delaying their payments at this point. So I thought it would be wise just to put it back before the board for consideration, see whether the board was wanting to stick with the current plan with the, uh, to re-initiate disconnects or, or not.
We had talked about starting the disconnects at the end of this month, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So the, the first disconnect would be for someone who was late on their August bill. So it would be a disconnect related to failure to pay a August bill, not previously, example. So I think what Director Rose is advocating is that we continue rather than ending that program on July 31st, continue going forward in the future.
Staff, do you have, and I think Bill brought up, do we have any numbers to kind of help us understand how big is the issue currently right now?
Sure, I can chime in on this. So as of the today, we have 765, uh, late customers. Uh, late notices would have went out for this, that accumulates for roughly about $206,000. That's in the rares right now. Now, bills are due here tomorrow, so some people could, the next 34 hours, basically when I ran this report today. Uh, as far as disconnects, we have ninety, ninety-six disconnects. Uh, about 27,000, about 60 days passed and about 48,000 is up to 60 days. So we have a total of about 48,000 and so there would be a disconnects.
I know we still have a day or two left, Stephen, but how does those numbers, the 765 late customers on any average month, how, how's that looking?
Uh, the numbers jump around a little bit. Usually we're about 500 going into the day of payments and then, you know, usually then out late notices and, and, you know, customers will pay their bills based on late notices. As we know, we, we've stopped putting out late notices. We stopped doing late fees. Uh, so usually we're, we're about, I would say about a third more to twice as much more. Uh, you know, money-wise, it's a little bit higher just because we have some, some customers or some accounts that are past three months that are going into three, four months past due.
And these people that are three or four months past due, these are folks that have not made any payments for three or four months. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And we ordered, and before we started, uh, this COVID, COVID issue, where were we, what would be a normal, normal month disconnects, around 20 to 30?
That is correct.
That's triple.
Thanks right now.
I don't know. And then, uh, if I remember right, Tony, in his remarks at the last, I think, said that this was not, uh, this particular directive didn't apply to muds, but it only applied to cities and towns. Is that correct, Tony?
Uh, no, I, I stated that the PUC order applied to private utilities and that governmental entities, including muds, cities and towns, uh, would not be applicable to the order. And then we concluded that the order had actually expired according to its terms.
Oh, it has expired.
In, in, yeah, back in May.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I guess I'll weigh in. I just, you know, we're at a point now where things are not in general getting better. Yeah, if, if anything, it's status quo and probably getting worse. If you look at, read the news and numbers of cases and almost any metric. So I guess I would advocate, um, pushing this out further, but that's the opinion of one.
No, I agree with you, Steve. Um, I know we're coming up on the fiscal year, need the, in, the money coming in, I guess, but it's not the right thing to do right now.
Tony, I have a question. Um, because to me, really what we're doing is somewhat kicking a can down the road. People are likely, I don't think COVID is going away anytime soon with the way things are looking. Uh, so to some extent, this helps. But to a large extent, it hurts because whoever is likely in a position where they're not paying a bill, suddenly when they do come back, they're going to have a really, really large bill that they have to pay. Um, I think this is a band-aid. Are there any other options available to the district to offer real and positive impact to their life other than accruing costs for them that's going to come due and likely create other issues?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what kind of options you have in mind. Certainly the board could, um, customize its policies and, and, um, in terms of staggering payments or providing for installment payments over a much longer term and whether you did that now to try to mitigate the amount of the debt that's accruing or once you finally do institute this, have a very long period, it, it's a challenge in my mind. Um, because as you point out, the longer this continues, um, the amount of debt is that much more significant and, and going to be harder for your customers to manage. Um, and I suspect if it continues long enough, you're going to be entering into very long installment payment plans with your customers. Um, it would not be appropriate just to forgive quote debt if, if that's where you're going.
I, I, I like what Greg's, well, maybe he's thinking, is there a way to, even if we do extend this out to have those homeowners pay something now and make that part of the longer-term repayment plan that once we go back to quote unquote normal, but there is some obligation now to pay something?
Yeah, and from a legal perspective, you guys have the, the authority to adopt whatever policy you, you think is appropriate with respect to this. So the, the legal, um, answer is, is certainly yes. Um, the challenge from a policy perspective is for those persons who are unemployed today, let's say they're a waiter at, at a restaurant. Um, by doing that, you know, for every customer where you may be helping somebody in the long term, there's other customers where you may be hurting them if they're currently unemployed, but when this is over, they will be employed and therefore have an, an income stream. Um, uh, those are two very different situations and the policy you described, um, impacts them very, very differently.
And the mud will work with every single customer that reaches out to them and says, we need help, like get a, get us on a payment plan or something like that. So it would be individual. Um, I guess reaching out, am I correct, Stephen?
That's correct. So we, uh, we currently stopped the, the late notices going out, but even in prior before COVID-19, we'd have a late notice go out. If, you know, if a customer was unable to pay their bill, they can more than welcome call us. We'll work out a payment plan with them. You know, we'll turn off the late fees at that time. Uh, so we always were flexible to working with any customer that needed the help from there. Uh, you know, everything's a case-by-case situation.
Yeah, uh, Stephen, do you have a feel for, for the average bill for the people who are running 30, 60, 90 days behind?
So I looked at the report this morning and kind of, yeah, I feel what I was looking at, you know, when you have most customers that say the bill's around one to 150, you know, they're now behind four months, you know, uh, some, some of the customers are approaching up to, you know, eight, nine to eight to a thousand dollars depending on what they're behind. Uh, we've had some customers do some partial payments here and there. Uh, so we're not against, you know, if anybody wants to call us, say, hey, I can only make a hundred dollar payment per month right now, that will apply to their bill. Uh, so we need, we'll work with anybody that needs any help with that. Uh, we do have some customers that haven't paid since COVID-19 hit and since all this took effect in March. We have other customers that were behind and now slowly starting to catch up. It is all varies between the different customers and what their needs are at the time.
So Tony, I guess I, I hear what you're saying too. I mean, there's two, there's two issues, Bill. Greg is right. I mean, how far do you kick this down, down the road and all of a sudden they have a bill next February for, you know, fifteen hundred dollars? Um, so that's part of it. To your comment, Tony, that, you know, these people aren't working and, you know, do they really have the money? I, I get that. I get that angle as well, but yet they're, they probably still have a bunch of other bills, right? They have gas bills, they have rent bills, they have other things that I don't know to what extent any other entity is doing what we're trying to do. So I gotta kind of weigh that as well, that you know, it's tough times, but we gotta try to figure out how to manage this thing.
Agreed. Bill?
I was wondering if Alan has any, uh, any touch bases with any of his, uh, compatriots and, you know, other in other cities around to see if they are doing a similar type thing or?
The individual touch base. The individuals that I've talked to, they are not delaying anything.
Okay, so they didn't go down this path then?
No, sir.
We also did a item utility billing, look out and do a round table, uh, which pushes and pushes around all of the utilities out there. Uh, and it's a mixture between some are postponing it, some haven't had an issue at all and they've continued on. So it's a mixture depending on the counts on the boards of, of each place.
Yeah, and, and my big fear is that I, uh, that suddenly February, March, because my biggest challenge is I don't think this going, I don't think this is going away. I don't think six months from now, that the situation is likely to be much better, uh, because I don't think we're going to have a vaccine. And so now we have a homeowner with $2,500, $3,000 bill, so they're having to pay their regular bill plus extra $250. Um, that's my bigger fear. And I don't have the answer. I'm not pretending to have it, but I, but I know that, that's going to be, if they're experiencing hardship now, that's likely, well, I mean, who knows if it's going to continue because that becomes an individual issue, but if they're doing it with this, you know, they could be doing it with other bills. It could be doing it with mortgages, student loans. Um, eventually you're having to suddenly pay two to three times your normal monthly activities because everyone's going to suddenly want them. Uh, and that's my bigger fear is that we're just creating a we're putting them at the down, at the end of a hill and we're rolling this big rock that's going to be coming toward.
You could kind of institute um, the policy under which, um, you know, payment now, um, needs to occur in accordance with, with some type of installment plan, but again, for special circumstances, kind of the circumstance I described, a customer is always able to come in the door and have a discussion with your staff and see if special circumstances warrant some exceptional relief from your standard policy, but that would certainly um, put more of the, the customers in arrears, uh, back on a payment plan. And if this amount in arrears continues to accrue at some point, your taxpayers or the other customers who are providing payment are going to end up overfunding their share of, of the cost of the district, frankly.
Yes.
So you, you may want to institute the payment requirement again in accordance with some installment process that's, that's reasonable, but again, any unique customer has the ability to come in the door and, and discuss the matter with your staff.
Yeah, I've seen, thanks, the first, the first exemption they gave was pretty much obligatory. But future wants, there had to be a demonstrated need other than just a phone call. Um, so I, I'm absolutely not opposed to extending it, but I think at a minimum, we need to have some type of language around encouraging people to pay whatever they can, even this, even if it's not a full bill and also possibly looking at showing a documented need, uh, so you don't have the situation where someone is just forwarding the cash and hey, I don't have to pay it, so I don't need to. I, I would hope that no one's doing that. Uh, but even if they aren't, my big fear is that you're going to suddenly have someone get ready to sell their house and either, you know, I don't know what our remedies are for that, if they sell it, if we just take the loss or, you know, or they just end up six months from now with a 1,800, 200, 100, $3,000 bill that they're trying to navigate.
You can send it to.
My mentality, Greg, just like yours, is we want to be responsible and receptive to hardship. But on the other hand, you know, I, I think having them do something now, whether that's a minimal payment or something to get them back into the mentality of this is not going to go away, it's not going to be forgiven and be reasonable about how we try to structure that now rather than wait in another six or eight months when this gets exponentially worse. Bill?
Uh, and it, you know, and then the next item on the agenda, I don't know whether I want to combine the two, is the possibility of a program for voluntary assistance from other customers, but the brief amount of, I will say, but, but, and the brief amount of research I've done on that, that's, that is a staff, that adds to staff workload because now we need to track those voluntary payments and then issue them a, uh, a notification at the end of the, uh, year so that they can turn it in for their taxes for a charitable donation. So I mean, even that, uh, it, I mean, and that type of program, I know Austin has one, there's other places around the country that have them. But even that type of a program, then you get into, how do you determine who gets the money? You know, you've got, you get, you get a, you get a, you get $10,000 in on one month's billing for addition to people say, here, we'd like to donate and help. Well, then how do you then determine how you, how do you distribute that? I mean, it's, there are so many questions and I frankly don't have answers.
I might suggest, Bill, that we table that till we get to it. I mean, this, let's get, let's get through this one first.
All right.
One, one other question. I'm sorry, Mark. Tony, I, I know some governmental organizations were able to take advantage of using CARES funds, uh, part of some of the government stimulus programs to rebate losses that they incur as a result of COVID-related economic crisis. Is that a possibility for the district? As to reduce the, uh, losses that the district may sustain from people's inability to pay their, uh, utility bills? Have you heard of that?
I haven't heard of any water district receiving COVID federal monies, if, if that's what you're asking. I could do a little bit more legwork. I believe that counties were given monies for distribution to local jurisdictions. So that may be a question we would want to discuss with Denny and, and Tarrant County.
Yes, I know some local, uh, towns and cities were given hundreds, if not millions of dollars. Uh, and I was just wondering if it was limited to just cities and towns or if it would, if any of that would be available for municipal utility districts?
Again, I haven't heard of any district securing it, but I can do a little bit of legwork and see if I can get an answer to your question. It's a good one.
Okay.
Anybody else? Kelly, Mark? Um, I mean, we got two issues on the table. It seems like to me we have what might be a motion or will be a motion to extend the current, uh, delay program, if you will. Uh, and to what, to what date would that be? That's, that's the first discussion. And then we're talking also about, is there a way to try to implement something that, um, which that would probably require staff going back and doing some homework and bringing forth that plan to the next meeting?
This is Tony, I guess.
Say something earlier, Mark? Yeah, the, this kind of goes in with the item number nine. And like I said, I want, don't want to actually get into that, but I can't see going number nine, doing the number nine. If we're not having customers try to do due diligence or try to do something, I, I can't see rest of the town or the rest of the district, excuse me. rest of the town or the rest of the district, excuse me, picking up the tab, including voluntary donations if they're not at least putting something toward their bill. I mean, having a free ride and then have somebody give you free money on top of it seems a little, I, I would not donate charity to, to people who are not paying their bills. Not without some real proof that they, they are in that kind of situation.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the, that's, that's one of the problems with, you know, the, the other program. I mean, it's, how do you manage it?
Let me ask staff this. You heard the discussion about trying to implement something where those homeowners who are in their ears pay something going forward, whatever date that is, whatever amount that is. Is that something that staff can look into and come forth with a recommendation about how that would work? How will it, will get implemented?
My question for you is, are we trying to impose a certain percentage that the customer has to pay that's in arrears? I mean, right now they have the capability to pay any amount that they want to pay each month. You know, we're just not enforcing that they have to pay anything. There's no late fees, there's no disconnects. It's really up to the customer. Uh, i- if you're asking, can we impose a certain amount, you know, we, we can, we can attach, you know, we can try to take a case by case, but like I said, we do have, you know, right now it's seven hundred sixty-five late notices that would go out. My first invite would be, let's start putting late notices back out. Maybe we do late notices starting this month and say, okay, we'll put an October date on there. And then if a customer has an issue with paying, because majority of our customers are thirty to sixty days back, majority of them. So if, if they're only thirty days back, then we have the option, go ahead and start catching that up. But if we're not requiring any kind of late fee or disconnect, then how do we impose what they have to pay, what percentage have to pay or base they have to pay?
Well, I guess that's the question on the table, Bill.
I was, you know, the, the late fee thing is, uh, I, I'm kind of, kinda am, uh, not, not really pushing the late fee, but you know, I mean, I think, I think that they ought to be paying something, all right? If you don't pay something, then I don't, I'll, I'm, I'm up to disconnecting you now. I mean, you can buy and pay, you know, whatever the agreement is that you've worked out with staff and I'm good. I, I mean, I'm not really into, I know it's, there's a late fee covers additional processing and all that additional work and all that type stuff, but I don't want to get into, I, I hate to say get into that, doing a punishment thing, but I, I expect the performance. And so if, do I just, do I just go with, you don't, you don't come in and make a payment? I'm sorry, we're gonna come and disconnect you and you've got, you know, ten days notification or whatever. So I don't know if that's a player or not. It's-
I mean, we, yes.
It, this is Tony. Is it viable for the district's billing system to impose a minimum payment? Um, kind of reflect that on a customer's bill wi- without a late fee, but state minimum payment, and I'm making this up, assuming we're gonna give them twelve months to behold with respect to anything in arrears, a minimum payment will be kind of one twelfth of the, the total bill that would otherwise be due? Does that make sense?
Uh, it, the, the template that we have wouldn't be individual to each person, say, you know, each person have a one tenth, one twelfth, uh, payment on there. It's gonna show what the full amount do, if they owe a thousand dollars, it's full amount. We have to track it on the staff level to see who would be making the payment or who's not. When we currently do payments, uh, even before COVID nineteen, we would take them off the disconnect list and say they're behind three months, you know, something happened. And we, they lost their job and we're trying to work with them, we would take them off the disconnect list, take them off the late fee list. We would track it that they're making their payments for the next three months if that's what we worked out.
So it's, it's, it's all manual. What you're saying is it's all manual.
That's correct.
Mark, give it your hand up for quite a while.
What I would like to, to put out there is at least pay your current charge for the month. And then something, whatever you agreed with staff as a payment for anything you have in arrears. So you must start paying your current bill and then start trying to catch up your arrears. And we don't penalize them for their arrears.
That's what we talked about, that's what we talked about before, which was starting, starting August first. That was gonna basically be the, the, you know, ground zero, some of the base level there. October within, I'm sorry, yeah, August first, then October will be the first time they can be disconnected, which means they have to stay current as they go along. And whether we impose late fees or not, that's completely up to the board. But we'd have to have, like you said, some sort of initiative to pay, which would be the disconnect to start back in October for those sixty days.
Yeah.
Why don't we just take consideration-
Do this to kind of the public, like in the arrears.
What if we extended it for people with a demonstrated need, i.e. you have to document the need versus just a phone call saying, I'm not gonna pay it or just simply not paying it?
I mean, if, so you're saying that we have to, do we have to contact the customers? I mean, like I said, we-
No, it's not up to us to contact them. They would have to contact us. So going forward, the only people that would be allowed to continue to not have to, uh, to continue on the current program are ones that come in and document a need.
We can.
Tony, from a legal perspective, do we get in any hot water there? I mean, what is demonstrated need? Uh, loss of a job? I mean, there's a bunch of things that would fall into that category. But if we treat one customer different from another based on quote unquote demonstrated need, do we, are we at risk there at all?
I, I don't think you're at significant risk. You, you're obviously not supposed to discriminate in connection with providing public utility service. You're not forgiving any debt or, um, that would be constitutionally problematic if you did that. But, um, I mean, your, your staff exercises discretion a- already. And I think there's some, you know, no job, there, there's some pretty obvious things. And if there's some ambiguity, I think staff could bring it up to you guys. Um, the, the more well-defined criteria we have, then it's, it's a matter of policy and we're not treating similarly situated customers differently. That would be a problem. But if all persons who are unemployed and have no income are treated equally, that, then I think it's, it's really not preferential.
Well, I, I get that, but then there'll be, there would, there will be varying degrees of hardship, right? Someone-
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll never be able to-
Yeah, I mean, somebody's out of a job.
Yeah.
And I get that, you're out of a job. Another customer could say, well, I'm working, but I'm only working twenty hours and not forty hours. My hardship is, I still have a hardship, but it's not, you know, it's not apples to apples.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, to the extent there's a clear policy, it's gonna be much easier for your staff to administer so they aren't um, playing King Solomon and saying, that's good enough, that's not good enough. Um, so it, it will be much, much easier for your staff to administer if there are specified criteria that, that have to be met. And frankly, that's easier for the public to understand too. Um, but that'll take a little bit of thought and, and maybe your staff can kind of develop some recommendations for that criteria and bring it back to you.
Mark, did you have your, uh, hand up?
Well, the only thing I was going to say is we are trophy club. To the, to the extent of losing one's income to the point where you can't pay your mortgage or, you know, you've got more things to worry about than just the, uh, mud bill. And, uh, uh, quite frankly, unless the entire household has lost the entire income, they should be able to pay at least something on their bill. That's just, just my viewpoint. I keep seeing posts about, you know, going out to Choctaw and to, uh, you know, golfing all the time, not pointing any fingers. But, uh, so, uh, yeah.
Bill?
Let me, let me ask this question. Would there be an advantage or a reason at this point to delay our action that we have currently have set on for sixty days, give this to staff to see if they have, uh, wanna put their minds together and, and come up with a possible plan that, that, uh, you know, a little research, a possible plan that looks like a good way out of this?
That's kind of where my head was at, Bill. Trying to separate the two a little bit, address the first issue of do we want really to pull the trigger on August first or delay it to some future point in time? And then address the second piece of it, which is staff coming up with a, a, uh, you know, something that can be implemented from a repayment perspective for those in the arrears.
Yeah, that, that has some guidelines or some, you know, I understand the necessity not to set rigid guidelines, even though, you know, the, the desire might be to set a rigid guideline, but, uh, the flexibility may be the key in this to the extent that it works. Uh, too much flexibility, then somebody's gonna run over us, I guess. I don't know, but, you know, there's gotta, there's gotta be a reasonable way out that's, that isn't overly, overly onerous, onerous to a customer. And I, I, I struggle to figure out what that is. And I understand Greg's point that, you know, it's some people uh, would wait to the last minute and then say, wait a minute, I don't have, uh, you know, I don't have what? Three thousand dollars to pay my water bill because I watered my yard every chance I had all through the summer. I, you know, it's just, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, maybe we take this one piece at a time. Um, the first, it's going back to your discussion point of, do we want to consider and put a motion forth to extend what we currently have in place? And vote on that, yea or nay? And then charge staff with coming back in August with a potential, if not planned, you know, another discussion point about how we address the, you know, those owners that are in the arrears from a repayment perspective.
Can I jump in for a second here? Uh, I would say, you know, if we're, for everyone in the arrears, you know, that's different than going forward. I think the first step would be, my recommendation was, you know, is there a date that we want to start moving forward where we want to expect customers start paying their bills? You know, we can set aside what's in the arrears, we can make payment plans case by case, we can work on everybody there as we would normally do before COVID nineteen. It's really going forward. Is there a date going forward that we want to start? Okay, this is when we expect everything to kind of be back to normal.
How much advanced time do you need, Stephen, of that date? And, and where I'm going is, is that something that the board each month can tell you, okay, and for the sake of discussion, uh, do you need that advanced notice or can they just tell you and say the first of the following month, start it or?
It, it, it depends on what we're trying to do and how quick we want to go forward. Uh, you know, there's a difference between late fees or a difference between disconnects. Uh, I just need a point where, okay, going forward, this is what we've got. So, you know, we-
Yeah, with, with respect to that issue, do you need more than a couple of weeks' notice?
I would, I would think the customer would need more than a few weeks' notice. We need to get something out in the billing cycle. So at the end of the month, I need about, about five days to get stuff either on the bill or to add it to the bill for a file or, or we gotta, or we gotta communicate and call each customer. I just need to know what direction we want to go. So we'll need some time on the staff level to reach out to the public and let them know what the board's decision was, instead of just kind of springing on them the next week.
Yeah. I think we're looking about a forty-five day window, uh, for, you know, from a decision point to a, to an implementation, you know, for publications to go out to the residents, that type thing. Uh, even though we're only talking about what, ninety, ninety-six right now, uh, you know, communications to those folks, uh, and also the basic policy we probably need. You know, I, I don't know, I don't know how much publication went out uh, from the mud when we went into the mode of, uh, allowing or doing no disconnects. So whatever level of notification we went out with at that point from the organization, we need to follow that same level of notification with whatever our action is at this point.
And staff's recommendation would be to put the notification on the bill that we're gonna start, you know, allowing, start having disconnects going forward uh, or late fees or wherever we decide, wherever the board decides to go with. Uh, and then we would actually reach out individually to each customer that is back to the ninety-six customers and let them know if we were planning a six-month, you know, payment plan or whatever the case was. Let those individual customers know and work with them out, work them out with everything versus let everybody know as the whole group, all forty-eight hundred connections.
Well, I, I think, you know, my, my point is, is that non-payment of at least a portion of the bill will result in a disconnect. You know, I mean, and how we, you know, I mean, that's just one, that's just one of the points that I have. Your bill can be two hundred, two hundred dollars if you don't come in and make a payment, and I'm looking for more than a dollar, but if you don't come in and make a payment, uh, and negotiate a payment with, with the organ, with, you know, with the utility district. Uh, if you don't make that payment, then I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to disconnect you. I mean, I, I, it's-
I remember our-
What is that?
So, uh, Stephen?
I was saying, remember, our bills do have more than just water. We got water sewer, we got stuff that we bill out for the town. All that's collected is a group. So how we determine that going forward, everything kind of has a sequence number on what gets paid first. And so it's really hard to do a flat amount when you've got bills that can range from, you know, eighty dollars to, to a thousand dollars, depending on the customers. I mean-
But why don't we, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we delay the order we issued last meeting one month to give staff time to come back with the plan? Because I don't think we're gonna be able to solution it here live.
I think that, that's where my head was at, Greg. There's, there's too much work to be done for staff to figure out a repayment plan. But yet August first is, you know, right around the corner. I'm sorry, Alan, did you have a comment?
I would like to know what the max time the board is willing to allow people for non-payment before we move into the next step. Are y'all willing to allow sixty days, ninety days, one twenty days? How long do you want to allow people to go without making a payment at all before we start proceeding with turning them off?
I will all the way in here. I think to Greg's point, the first thing we, I would recommend we do is delay this or extend this current period thirty days. And then all of the questions that we're talking about need to be flushed out so that when we are talking about this in thirty days, we have a very, you know, stout plan that is, uh, very clear. My view, I think Mark's view, I've heard everybody say, at that point in time, people gotta start paying something. In my view, right away, but I don't wanna resolve-
I think, and, and I may misunderstand guys, but I think I'm hearing from your staff that for them to administer this, there needs to be a line where prospectively, customers need to start paying their bills. Now, what's in arrears as of that date, they can work out installment payment plans and they can bring back recommendations to you. But prospectively to say only a portion of the current bill has to be paid, I think I'm hearing from Stephen, that's really a problem in light of the different fees and charges and the fact that we're collecting bills on behalf of the town. I think he's saying they need a date where prospectively we're back to business as usual. Um, and Stephen, tell me if I'm misunderstanding that, but I feel like you're being pretty emphatic about that.
That is correct. But we just need a line in the sand somewhere where we can move forward. Now, remember, last four days.
Yeah, uh, I think a little misunderstanding on what I was saying. I believe we should start billing again in August and they have to pay their minimum or pay that current month. What they've got in arrears, they can come up with a payment plan, but I think we should start billing again in this next billing cycle.
That's our current plan. That's what we, by a month.
That's the current plan.
I'm saying that's what we, we, we said last time, that's what we voted in. And I think we should stick to that. I think they should start paying their current bill on this next billing cycle.
I think the question on the table, and it's not a motion, that is, this discussion is, do we stick with that plan? To Mark's point or to Bill's first discussion point in our last fifteen minutes? Do we delay that some period of time? Thirty days, whatever that is, and then have staff come forward with a more stout plan for repayment? Bill?
I, I, I think I, either thirty or sixty day, you know, delay what we're doing right now. I don't care. I was looking thirty or sixty days. Greg says thirty, thirties. I don't have a problem with thirty because I need time for staff to look at it. Now, back to- I don't care. I was looking 30 or 60 days. Greg says 30, 30. I don't have a problem with 30 because I need time for staff to look at it. Now, back to back to Alan's question, and I think Alan's question is a prospective question. And it's like, and Alan's question is, it could be either side, prospective or retrospective. How long do I let somebody not pay a bill before I say, that's it, you're going to get disconnected because I haven't seen any money? And the question is 30, 60, or 90 days. And my answer to that is no more than 60 days. You missed a, you missed a bill. You didn't pay anything last month. We've talked, you know, had all the conversations. The next bill comes around, you get your, you get your second notification and you haven't come in and made a payment or made arrangements? Bingo. I, I'm going to get your attention. I'm going to shut your water off. I, I, we, you know, we have to have a working arrangement with our customers and they have to come to, they have to be willing to come to the table and have that discussion. And if they're not willing to do that, then I can't see that we can continue indefinitely providing services without fee, without discussion. And so the purpose, the purpose at the 60-day point from my perspective is I want to get your attention.
Let me ask staff a different way. If we, if hypothetically to Greg's point, we just push the, push this out 30 days, our current program, will staff be able to come back in August to the board with a very specific recommendation for all these things we're talking about, for immediate repayment, for, you know, all these issues? It seems like we're talking about 20 different things, all hitting at the same issue. Is that enough time for you guys to come forth with a, a very clear program that you could present to the board?
I'm still not able to answer that. Maybe, Alan, there's still a lot of variables that need to be decided by the board first before we can come out with a plan. I mean, right now, we have a plan that anybody can come to us and we can make a payment plan and be flexible with the customer. But without having a designated time, without having to say, okay, we're going to start disconnects no matter what. We're already 60 days out for disconnects. As we stated, if we start this August 1st, it would go over 4th before the first disconnect would start to be in effect. You know, if the board wants to postpone late fees, late fees go out a day after, so they'd be on the, they'd be on the 21st of the month. We want to postpone late fees and late notices, then that would be a decision from the board. Already kind of at a point now where if a customer called us and said, I'm having trouble, I lost my job, can I work out a payment plan? Absolutely. We, we work with them, you know. If it's only $100 a month, they can pay, their bill's 80 and they're putting 20. You know, each customer is going to be different. Each bill's going to be different, each unique situation. We already kind of do that now. You know, but the, the citizen, you know, the customer that approached us has to come to us. You know, we're not going to approach all, you know, 800 customers and say, well, you missed a payment or you're a little bit late, you know, what can we do for you? I mean, we always have that flexibility.
Well, I understand that. But the fact of the matter is, is that people, the number of late people are going up and the number of people with potential disconnects is going up. So why we have a policy that says, come in and talk to us, that isn't changing behavior?
The reason that is, there, there's no, what's the initiative? Before is you have a late fee. You pay your bill because you don't want a late fee. You pay your bill because you don't want to be disconnected. So as long as we leave that, that window open, leave that flexibility open, what is the initiative to pay your bill on time or pay it in full? That's the problem we're running into.
And I'm with Stephen's understanding. That's why we talk about the minimum timeframe. If we don't have the minimum timeframe, then we can't operate, we can't collect, we can't do what we need to. Now, we can go out and we can take extra initiatives to contact the people that have not paid and are in arrears. We can either do some additional mailings, we can have staff go out and put notices on their door. We can do little things to try to help get their attention, but staff needs a clear and specific timeframe that the board is willing to allow non-payment at all before we can enact anything.
Mark?
That's why I was saying we should go forward with what we decided last month. Because if it goes out for August, the first possible disconnect is in October, correct, Stephen?
That's correct.
That's what you stated over and over again. That's three months. That's 90 days, right? About 60, 90 days.
60, 60 days after they missed the payment.
60 days.
Yeah.
That's plenty of time. We give them a notice, we don't charge them late fees, but we tell them that if you don't pay something by October, you're going to be disconnected. And that kind of language should be there. I mean, we won't charge them late fees, but we should put some kind of stick out there. We've been giving them a free ride since May. But quite frankly, if we don't start it in August, it will be November. This, it will be after this fiscal year before we even start seeing money from these people.
So that is
I don't think we should delay. I think this, we should start like we originally agreed in the previous, in the June meeting to start sending out, hey, or we'll disconnect in October. I, I, you know, I, I feel bad. I feel like a Grinch, but dead gummit. You know, it's been three months.
So Alan, did I hear you say that if we stayed with the current policy to Mark's point, is there some way we could ratchet up communication, either be it in their own mail, put notices on their doors, whatever that might be, to help emphasize the need to get, you know, to get moving?
Absolutely. So anyone that is, let's just say, for example, that the board decides that 60 days of non-payment, you will be disconnected. Where prior to that, we're going to take steps to make sure that we notify those folks, you have had non-payment for this many days. If you do not make payments or make payment arrangements, then you will be disconnected on this date. Maybe it's 48 hours, maybe it's 72 hours. It's whatever the board feels comfortable with. But we have to have that firm parameter to, to lead from.
And, and how is that communicated to the customer?
We will, depending on what it is. So let's just say, for example, if they're 30 days behind, we can go ahead and mail out an additional flyer or add some additional language to the bill itself. If they are 60 days, then we can actually go to each location that's 60 days and put something on their door.
And before COVID-19, we sent out late notices, which within 30 days, if you're late 30 days, you get a late notice. That's, and we do have a lot of customers who, who are actually missing the late notice here lately. We stopped doing that. Decide to go forward with no more late notices, no more disconnects and late fees. Some, some, some citizens would only pay when they got the late notice app. So we, and then we also have additional communication, anybody's about to be disconnected. We send out, we call them, we send out emails. We, we do approach and let customers know these are what's going on, this is what's, you know, the situation. Some, sometimes mailers don't work very well because the rest of their stuff, you know, they're, they're behind, they don't read whatever's in the envelope. So we try to take the proactive thing and let customers know, you know, you're about to be disconnected. We don't just disconnect without any communication. So we would take the same steps we have here. The additional steps I would recommend is, you know, these 100 customers that are right now currently 60, 90 days plus, we communicate with them and let them know we can work with them going forward. But if we know that we weren't going to start forward, we have 60 days, then we'll continue our process with we send out notices after 30 days, we send out additional communication when anybody's going to be disconnected in October.
Essentially, we'll be adding one more step into the process. We'll continue with the late fee notification, then we'll get to the 60-day notification of non-payment.
I, I would say this, I, I'm comfortable with everything you guys have said. I don't like the idea of sending people out to people's houses. I wouldn't want to have to go out to different people's houses in this environment of COVID. I don't think we should be sending our staff members out to people's houses. You send letters, you make a phone call. If they miss those two, then I don't want to send our employees out to someone's house. We should be minimizing face-to-face contact, not encouraging more.
Well, and what I mean by that is not that the staff will go up and knock on the door. They'll just go up and literally affix a notice to the door.
And door tag?
Yes, correct.
That, that would create some problems. I would assume with the door tag, we've had it in firms in the past, and then you have people who can tell what these notices are on somebody. So say you had a colored copy, door tag or hanger, you know, are we kind of putting them on the spot with that on there?
I, I, I guess I'm with Greg. I don't think we need to be sending people out. If you, if you're sending a notice and you're physically calling people, that ought to, that ought to get the job done.
Instead of putting it on the door, could it be put in their mailbox?
No.
Legally, you can't put anything in a person's mailbox. You're not the post office.
I got people stuffing stuff in my mailbox.
Send them a letter.
Or affix it to the outside of the door.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, there's always, you know, certified mail or whatever. I hate going to that expense, but that can also be done.
So let's bring this back. Do we need the 60, do we need the 30-day delay or do we press ahead or do we have an understanding? I mean, is that where we at?
I, I don't think we need to delay this anymore. I think going with what we decided back in June will just get us right, you know, get us going. And we need to put a stake in the sand. And I think our original decision back in June is the appropriate one.
We do know we are, we are coming up into the summer months and we are going to pay for water as consumption goes up.
Yeah, and those bills we can't skip.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm okay going forward. That's it. But I think we need to start back sending the notices out to people. Because I think Steve is right. There's some people pay their bills when they get the notice. So I personally, I wasn't aware that we had stopped sending the notices. I thought we just stopped charging late fees. I didn't realize that also meant we weren't sending the notices as well. That's need to hear and know. But I think we need to start back sending the notices.
Now, with the notices, it will show everything that's in the rears, all, everything that's late. There's not a way to separate that out and say, well, we're only going to show part of this, everything in the rears.
Yeah, that's fine. To me, that's fine.
Are we going to put in the, the late notice that we're still not going to do the late charge?
Yeah, that's up to the board. Before we talk about doing late fees, so if the board wants to go, don't, don't want to go forward with late fees, then we would just, we wouldn't run the late fee and do any charges for it.
Okay, I think sending out the late notices, just let's not add injury. Late fees are not something we really, that was more of a stick type issue. You start charging them money. And I don't think we should do that at this point.
It was never a plan to discharge what's in, what's further back in the late fees. It would have been going forward.
Yeah, for, if you're, if you, you know, we've already had the program, basically is what I understand Stephen says. We've already had the program. Now we're, now we're ending the program, so if you now don't pay, what, September's bill, you will incur late fees on September's bill.
It would start August, for instance, and you have to pay late fee going into September.
Okay.
That's why I was kind of saying they must at least pay their current monthly bill, then whatever extra to catch up.
So if I hear everybody correctly, or for what we're all collectively saying, what we agreed to a couple of months ago stands.
We take no action on, on, on this item.
That's correct. That's what I'm getting at. So I, I think everybody seems to be in violent agreement.
Maybe not violent, but in agreement.
We haven't heard from Nellie. Kelly's still muted. Oh, well.
And she's in the shadows.
Yeah. Probably bad-mouthing us where we can't hear her.
No, no, she's leaving. All right, well then, there is no action needed on item number eight. Let us move on to item number nine. Maybe this will be a quick discussion as well, given what we just went through. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of a program to accept voluntary donations from customers to assist payment and utility bills by others. Bill, I think you brought this forward and
Well, it was, it was, I think I mentioned it last meeting as a possibility, but it's, it's, to go down that path, to go down that path is is full of significant decisions that have to be made. Let me just put it there. And so I don't, I don't know. I mean, it would take a board's decision, one, just that we wanted to go that path before you even started sorting things into the correct sandbox to make a decision or, you know, what it looked like after you decided to go down the path. So I don't know. I don't know that we need to go there at this point. I mean, it's just, it's a thought. Just put it there.
Mark?
Yeah, I kind of agree. Doing this would make it an onus on our staff to try and figure out who is the most needy or, you know, any way we go, someone can say, you're playing favorites. And we do not want to be seen doing that. I mean, it'd be very, very hard to figure out, okay, balance out this one family against another as far as pain. And even if it's charitable and, you know, then you got to get into I know about charitable organizations. I belong to a couple of them. And I know we don't qualify as a 501(c). So I'm, I'm not even sure we can say that their donations might be tax deductions.
Double.
I mean, they, they might be, but they might not be. And I'd sure as heck not want to tell somebody, you can donate and if you can take it off your taxes and they find out at the end of their year that, oh no, that's not tax deductible. Then they come back after us.
Yeah, I don't, you know, now that you bring it up, Mark, I don't know. I mean, I don't, that would require, that would require research, but even if, if the answer is no, we can't do it, then somebody else sets up the 501(c)(3), runs in. I mean,
No way.
It just gets, it gets muddy, put it there.
I, I, I'm agreeing with you guys. I mean, if I wanted to help my next-door neighbor out because he lost his job and I was going to go pay his mud bill, I certainly wouldn't expect that to be tax deductible. I'm doing it to help my neighbor out and we have a mechanism to do that today.
Everybody likes those GoFundMe things too. I mean, you know, someone might set up something like that for somebody who's really in trouble.
Yeah.
Anybody passionate about moving this forward or?
I'm not.
Okay. I see a bunch of heads nodding. All right, let's move on then. Discussion 10.
Apparently Tony wasn't either. He left the call.
No, he left, he left completely.
I'm here.
He doesn't want us, he doesn't want to, want to show us the jet in the background.
He had the candy bar going, I think.
I was trying to do you guys a favor so you didn't see me eat dinner on screen, so.
There you go.
I, I was thinking he was just laughing. He had us and had, had his mute and his hangup.
Go ahead.
Item 10, discussion of possible action regarding fiscal year 2021 annual budget. Mr. Rose, Mr. Wilson.
Bill, on the start?
We had a, we had a, we had a meeting with Stephen. Generally, a high-level discussion of of, of the, of the budget. We didn't get down into it too far as far as individual items. And I think I'm going to let Stephen talk to the 3.5% and let him talk about the budget. I do, I will say that, well, two things. I think is the board, if the board has any particular items that they would like to see or raise as possible inputs to the budget, I would request them to do that. I mean, I, there's, there's one thing I know or a couple of things I'd like to do. You've all heard it before. I'd like to see a vision, mission, goals and objectives established for the organization. And the other thing I'd like to look at, it's also rebranding. And those do require some funding for a little bit. I have asked Stephen if they were in there and carried forward from last year because they were in last year's budget. I haven't looked at this one, so I can't answer that question. But we turn it over to Stephen so he can talk about the 3.5% factor.
Sure. Our start with, Bill, start your first thing on the rebranding. That is not in here. That was released and moved on to an actual project that we did. So I do not have that budget in here. So we'll, we'll go forward here first. So it's, this is kind of a, we, we can talk about reserves and we can talk about the budget. It kind of goes hand in hand. So we can start with the budget first. If we would go to page 198. As everybody knows, you know, we, we, based on the tax valuation of each year, we're waiting for certified or at least estimated certified numbers at the end of this week to determine what the total number for our MNO is going to be and our tax collection from there. So based on that information, this is just a summary of what our taxes were as of this current fiscal year, fiscal year 20, and then what next fiscal year 21 is going to be. Um, so that's just kind of going down the list there and seeing where we are. We can get to the more of the meat potatoes, which is going to be the general fund. But as you can see, based on what I have here, uh, what are revenues, collections, and then what expenses are, and then what the surplus is going to be the year. The rest of these are, as we know, the fire fund and then the tax GL service and then the revenue service on there. We'll move forward down here. Let's go ahead and go to page two hundred, and, you know, there's a lot of line items in here individually. If there's any particular question anybody has, we'd be glad to answer and help out. But as we go along, we are looking at a about three point nine percent decrease in the revenue for next year. Uh, this pertains to water, what we think the water revenue is going to be. Uh, it's one of the bigger impacts on there. We are looking at a little bit more conservative and trying to work with what COVID is going to be going forward and the water usage. Uh, we are still seeing some impacts of COVID with commercials. Uh, so, you know, it's something we have to take in consideration going forward in our year. Uh, and going down the list, we know interest rates are not near as high as they were beginning of this this current fiscal year, so we take consideration of those. Those are a significant revenue loss uh from year over year. Going down the list here, does anybody have any questions on the revenue side? Everybody good? Going down the list.
So Stephen, just just recap, high level, what's the revenue difference between twenty twenty and twenty proposed twenty twenty-one?
What, the amount, or?
Yeah, just a dollar amount.
Well, that's going to be right here in front of you. So what we have here is, we have two different proposed, which we're about to get into the expense and the expense side of the water. Uh, but if you look under fiscal year twenty-one proposed, there's no increase here. We got ten, ten point two. Uh, right now, we're looking about four hundred thousand, four hundred twenty thousand difference between this current fiscal year, but to what we're looking at for next year. Which is about three point nine percent, four percent decrease in there, so. Uh, going down the water side of it here, water, you know, we're looking at expenses going down about uh three percent there. If I can zoom in my screen here, sorry. Uh, and then as we go down, once again, looking at wastewater side here, we've got a decrease about four percent on wastewater. Decrease of about six percent on admin. So all in all, if you get to the very bottom of page two oh one, you're going to see where our revenue and our expenses are and where we have about a three point nine percent decrease in revenue for this year, and then a three point nine percent decrease in expenses. And that's a quick summary on there.
If I'm reading this right, it's almost a hundred thousand dollars to the good side.
I'm sorry?
I'm I'm looking at it, and it looks like we will have a surplus of about two hundred thousand, less than that, but about a hundred ninety-three thousand, a hundred ninety-four thousand surplus.
No, we have a surplus. Uh, I'm not sure where I'm here.
I'll take two oh one.
What we're looking at, the current fiscal year, the very last column is our projection for this year, what we think is going to finish out. So that one ninety-three, one ninety-four is for fiscal year twenty that we're in now.
Okay.
So what you're looking down here is the five thousand dollars surplus with no rate increase, about eight thousand, it was nine thousand with a small rate increase on the base. Now, we'll, we'll get into those. As you can see on here, we we do two different budgets here. One is going to be with a rate increase of a dollar per base. The other one's going to be with no rate increase. Uh, the main thing here is water is uh not subsidizing its expenses. It's got an under recovery of a hundred and seventy-one thousand. Uh, that's based on what expenses are needed for water and the revenue we're going to collect for next year. And then sewer is actually over collecting about ninety-three thousand. So we have a net there that we need to try to collect, uh, so that the way to collect that would be to add a dollar to the base, which will give us about ninety-four thousand dollars. Uh, that's what you're going to see on that column there, which is uh the proposed dollar dollar increase base. Uh, and then.
Do you all statement?
I'm sorry?
What page are you on?
I'm on two hundred. Two hundred is just the budget.
Hey, well, yeah, we're trying to follow what you're talking about with all these numbers, so help us to where you're at.
Go to page two oh one, Stephen, to the bottom in the yellow, and explain to them the different columns. So start with column number five, the fifth column, where you show a deficit of eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
Explain, explain why and what that number is, and then the one to the right of it, please.
Okay, so the main thing here for the eight thousand, that is, as saying there's going to be a dollar increase and offset the uh water loss or the water under coverage of a hundred and seventy-one thousand. That basically collects ninety-four thousand of that. The easiest way to kind of go up to is, I'll try to get back up here. All right, so on the, both the revenue, I'm sorry, both of the expenses for water and wastewater, we put aside, we put aside two hundred thousand per department for contribution of reserves. Uh, the way to offset some of this is we can lower this down and collect some of it through a dollar base. Uh, we can take all of it out of contribution of reserves.
So the column, the fifth column shows if we add a dollar to each base.
That's correct, add a dollar to the base.
Okay, so that gives us a deficit of eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. The one next to it.
Surplus, isn't it?
That's a surplus.
Surplus, sorry, sorry. If we do not uh put as much into cash reserves, then we can go ahead and cover the deficit that we're proposing and come out with a surplus of five thousand one hundred and ten dollars. So I guess the direction we're looking for is, does the board want to implement a dollar rate increase? Or do they want us to not put as much into cash reserves to cover this revenue deficit?
And what's that net amount that we would not be putting into cash reserves? I know it's two hundred thousand each. What would that amount be?
So the two hundred thousand actually goes down to a hundred thousand for water and wastewater if we do no increase, or it would be, it would be a hundred and forty-five thousand. You're looking at ninety thousand dollar difference going into reserves.
And so Stephen, uh, talk about, uh, so we know what our current budget is, it's nine point seven million dollars, whatever it is. What do we have in unallocated reserve as of the end of June?
So that's what we can scroll up here to the, as you before, but we go to one ninety-seven. The one ninety-seven shows our targets that we have, uh, as of six thirty. What we have, the, this is all for reserves, what we have in reserves in each uh percentage that we have for each different category. And if you look in the very far right side, it shows where our total reserve target is, the minimum and the max.
So if I'm reading this correctly, we have seven point eight million in reserve.
That is correct.
And so I guess my question to you would be, why would we recommend continuing to collect reserves? If we have, and I realize not all of this is reserved because some of this comes out as working capital. But if we have seven point eight million dollars in reserve on a nine point seven million dollar budget, why are we continuing to increase fees when we have this amount of money in reserve?
So, uh, once again, our recommendation here is, we gave me two different options to make up the revenue loss or the under coverage for the water. Rate that we have, or what we believe the consumption is going to be for next year. We have a, we have a minimum and a max that we talked about here last year, and when we have our policy. Uh, we have a kind of a moving reserve as far as what infrastructure needs replaced as we go along, go further. It's completely up to the board to decide. We want to continue adding more contribution to the reserves. Uh, we do head gas, have different avenues that we do have contribution reserves going forward for replacement.
I guess I'm kind of headed where maybe Greg is headed. I mean, we just spent an hour or more talking about people who can't pay their bills and can't find a job and COVID nineteen and all the uncertainty. I mean, we're pretty healthy right now. I I I would struggle trying to, as I always say, explain to my next door neighbor why we're, why rates are going up when we are pretty healthy and in very tough times. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I I I just, just for me, I would absolutely not be for raising rates with the amount of money we have in reserve at this time. Uh, Bill, I think you had your hand up.
I I I know, I think that, you know, we did the, we did the buckets, we haven't allocated them, but this gives you a good idea where they go. And uh, overall, I think it looks, looks real good. And so I'm, you know, the reason you have reserves is to offset those situations that we've been, you know, we put the two hundred thousand dollars in a year to cover problems because we didn't think we had the reserves. Well, now we've got the, we've got the reserves, that's what they're there for. We use them and we monitor the funding on an annual basis and replenish them as we need, need them, so. I mean, that's, it's hard to say that you don't, you know, you look at those graphs, it's hard to say, maybe you change the allocation somewhere along the way on where they're at on some of the levels, but overall, uh, you look at the total target, total reserves targeted, we're in great shape. I mean, you've got, we're over reserved in operating reserves right now by roughly what, five hundred thousand dollars? And so I mean, I look, I look at, I look at that beautiful bar chart and say, the only thing we need to do here is ship, ship the few dollars here and there, left and right, and it all looks great. And so based on that, I don't see a reason to have a two hundred thousand dollar reserve specifically dedicated for water and for wastewater. Those, I mean, that's the purpose of having the reserve policy is so that you don't do that particular thing. So I'm, you know, that's where I'm at on that. I I agree. I.
I think Mr. Rose, though, instead of looking at that as five hundred thousand dollars, I think that's closer to fifty, one million five hundred. Because if I cut the difference between men and Matt and put an average there, we're one and a half million dollars over between the minimum and maximum.
Well.
Dollars over max.
Yeah, but in that discussion on operating reserves, Stephen likes to have two hundred thousand as a, as a basic operating reserve because we get into the tax, we get into this between October, November, December, January, when the tax bills aren't in, and we have to kind of float along without tax revenue without that bucket. So the two hundred thousand number, two hundred thousand dollar, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand number.
Two million dollars is, is what I'd like to have them operating. The reason that's a little bit higher right now is based on, I'm not a hundred percent sure the payments and how much income we're going to have for the district coming in when we have payments that are in the rear and continue to be in the rear. And so it's a little bit more operating capital there just in case.
Well, it's a lot more. I mean, it's fifty percent more, so.
I mean, realistically, if we take two million off that, that's five point eight million dollars. We're talking two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars. We're nowhere near the millions. Our reserve category is so healthy. I think all saying the same thing, maybe for slightly different reasons. I think the consensus is, take it out of reserves, do not increase the base rate.
Yeah, I mean, if there's an issue comes up during the budget year where they, where you would ordinarily have said, well, I'm going to take it out of two hundred thousand dollars, it comes out, it comes out of these reserve buckets. That's what they're designed for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
I think we agree to that. We just wanted to show the, a way to cut the shortage on the, on the revenue side for the water. Uh, that's why we wanted to kind of get two different options on there. But as you see, our main proposal here, which is no increase, it's just reducing the contribution reserves down to a hundred thousand for water and wastewater, and then also has wastewater subsidizing some of the shortage or under recovery for the water side for this year.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that, but some, you know, it's, it's worked both ways. We've seen it, we've seen it go both ways now, so.
Well, ultimately, I think that's always going to be a moving target. I mean, as long as it's not increasing at an increasing rate. So if the amount that was being subsidized was increasing at an increasing rate, then I think we have a disparity that we have to address year to year, fluctuate one side or the other. And I I don't think if we react to every time there's a fluctuation, then there won't be insanity to our rate structure.
And I do want to say, if we would go to page two oh three on on that, on that token there, uh, Greg, uh, we're, we're looking at the trend here. We do have budgeted for next year to go out for a full rate study uh with new gens to look at our water tier rates. Uh, we did this back in two thousand fifteen, it was in place. Uh, so we believe that the, we need to restructure and look at everything going forward for the rates. Uh, as you can kind of see on the charts where where the trends are going uh per connection on the revenue per year.
Yeah, it's probably time to relook at our rate structure, make sure we're recovering the right amount of revenue for the costs that's uh been incurred for that particular rate. So I think that's absolutely appropriate.
Bill?
Uh, when, when Stephen gets ready, I'd like to talk, I don't know whether you want to talk about taxes at this point, the rollback rate.
Sure.
The other thing we need to do is, I, we, we've had those, the reserve buckets, we've not taken a formal action to allocate, uh, allocate funds in them. This is, I think this was, uh, Stephen's worked on it, and basically what's in those buckets now are his work, it's not a board action. So I think we probably need to take a board action on filling those reserve buckets, but that's.
I I would wait on that. Uh, my, my recommendation, we have it before in the policy to go ahead and adopt it when we adopt a budget.
Okay.
Just me kind of showing what we have in there, where the, where the funds can go. Uh, a good picture of where this year is going to be, and if we're going to have a deficit or surplus. Uh, as we know, we have, you know, summer coming up and and things, and we have a big point of rep usually, but we also have our bigger expenses coming in the summer, so I want to kind of get a good point of where.
I re- I remember that now, and we did it because we would have, uh, it's like one snapshot a year to do it and take a look at it. I remember that now. Thank you, Stephen. So if you'd talk about that rollback rate, I think we need to get people on board on that now so they understand it.
All right, as, as we know, each year, uh, we had a, we have a rollback rate that we have to meet. Uh, that has now changed over to the voter approved rate uh from Senate Bill two came out. Uh, I do want to say that our, our MNO is about ninety percent fire, uh, so the biggest portion of the change would be fire. We don't have certified numbers yet. Certified numbers come out this Friday or Saturday, uh, or at least certified numbers. So these things change daily as we're going along through the months. Uh, but as we currently sit right now, uh, we are over the rollback rate. And what that means with the rollback rate is that it would automatically go to an election uh in November for, for a vote approval on the, on the new rate there. My recommendation would be to get under the rollback rate, and what it would take roughly right now, it looks like it's going to be about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand uh dollars difference for us to get under the rollback rate. I have a range there because I don't know for sure what the end of this, end of this week is going to be for the certified numbers.
Where's your, where are you looking at, Steve? Where's your range?
So if you go down to all right, so you see, if you go down to page one ninety-nine, and you'll see the overall tax rate for fiscal year twenty-one about the bottom of the page, right above person. So that is our, our complete rate, that's with the MNO and the INS. If you look at here, the max rollback rate, I left it at that term so everybody understood it, is where we need to be. We'll have to be under that rate.
So we're over by, if I did back, we're above the max rollback rate by point zero zero one eight nine.
Right.
Uh, can we reduce the MNO general fund to point zero zero five three, this is all based on this document, we'll change later, to uh point zero zero five three four, and in, and then increase the ba- base rates to equally to cover lost costs, lost revenue from the taxes?
So that's kind of what we talked about when we had our committee meeting here. Uh, the, at the MNO rate, uh, the district collects roughly about, it's going to be roughly about a hundred and thirty-five thousand for next year, we're looking at for taxes for the MNO part of it. Majority of that comes out of the fire, so the fire is to collect about one point, one point two and a half uh for, for the taxes for the MNO. If we, as we talked about before, I don't know what the number is going to be until I get certified numbers here, but let's say it is a hundred and, you know, a hundred and thirty-five thousand for short, it would, ours is zero out or nonpartamental, and that would have to be increased by rates or offset by reserves, or however the board would like to go forward with that.
As, as I look at the fire, as I look at, they, fire department, if, I don't see that I can change the tax rate on the fire department because it is a separate bucket basically, and it's always funded by taxes. And so I don't have, if I cut the fire department tax rate to get tax rate to get us back underneath the rollback rate, I don't have another way to fund within the fire department. the rollback rate, I don't have another way to fund within the fire department right now, I mean, without developing some other fee and going through a furball to get there. So, that's why I was looking at what I mentioned.
The other option, if we go that way with rates, that is basically saying that we are going to cut our portion of the MNO and we're going to offset, offset the shortage that was basically, is mostly called by some fire, by a rate for the citizens for water and sewer.
Yeah.
The other option is, I've, I've had meetings with the chief in the fire department, and they're presenting a budget that's a little bit higher than it was last year. We are going to have a joint meeting here, once I get certified numbers, we'll have it in the 30th and kind of discuss this a little more in detail, is to either have to let them know that we have to try to work on their budget and reduce their budget, or we need to take it out of the fund balance in the fire. As we know, fire is 100% covered by taxes, but over the decades, we do have some money that's been saved, you know, that hasn't been spent out in expenses, so we do have some of a fund balance remaining in the fire.
How much is in there?
Roughly 600,000.
And what are we talking about? The proposed increase?
So, like I said.
What do you know now?
About 100, 150,000 have to come out of there. But I do want to let everybody know before we, before the board, for that route, there is no true reserves for the fire department, other than the gas before ladder truck. So, once these funds are gone, there's no working capital, operating or nothing for the fire.
Yeah, so I would say this. So, I would say this, I'm not for increasing the water, the water wastewater rates to cover the fire shortfall. I recognize there's $600,000 there, we're talking about 100, 130,000 coming out of that reserve account. If we quote, I mean, I think we have a year or two before we have to take a different action, but I think, I don't, I'm not advocating doing it now. I'm not for doing that at this point.
Doing, doing what, Greg?
Funding the shortfall for the fire tax by adding charges to water and wastewater. Essentially, what I'm doing is, by lowering the fire tax, you're taking revenue that would have come from, from the entire district, i.e. Westlake and Trophy Club, and you're saying, we only want people from Trophy Club plus Solana to pay for it.
Bill? Well, what you have to understand is there, there are two parts to that 3.5%. Two, there are two factors that go into it. One, the mud's MNO, and two, the fire department's MNO. Okay? So, it's the combination of those two numbers that come together, gives you, gives you a larger dumper that becomes the 3.5%. So, when you, it's like, well, okay, it's 3.5%. How do I divide this out? And I just took it all and said, well, the fire department stays fire department, but we take the three, you know, the option would be to take the 3.5% back out of the mud's MNO, where I can go someplace else and get those funds. I can't go someplace else and get the fire department's funds and, you know, I, I do not, I do not want to fund the fire department with water wastewater revenue.
If we, if we did what's been suggested, that's exactly what we're doing. If we add money to the base rate, where's it coming from? Water and wastewater. So, we only have, we only have two ways to make, to bring in revenue, water wastewater rates or fire tax. So, if we, if we're reducing the fire tax, we're doing that of water wastewater.
No, 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 no. You're taxing in two places. You're taxing fire department and you're taxing mud MNO. Okay?
I, I understand, but it's coming from the same.
Bill, if I can help out here, if we're 100, let's say we're $150,000 short, remember, only 10% of the MNO is the mud, so you're really looking at 15,000 of the mud's portion of that, the rest would be the fires portion. If you covered all 150 out of the mud, then the, ultimately, the district would be offsetting or, you know, taking.
I, I just look at it and say, when you add the two together.
But we are, about 10% of it, so it's, it's a big difference there where, you know, coming from the fire expenses on that side or the shortfall on that side.
Okay.
So, my, my, my solution would be, take it out of the, the reserve or the oversis there in that account. I recognize that that would take it from 600,000, worst case scenario, to 450. It's not a long-term solution to resolving that issue. You would have to come up with a, another solution to resolve it, but for this year, that would be my recommendation.
And just so the rest of the board is understanding, the 3.5% is the new rate. It used to be 8% prior to SB2, now it's 3.5% is where we have to be at for the new rate.
The rollback rate, right?
And at some point, we may have to go to an election and, and, and go that route because right now, this is not going to go away. This is not a one-year phenomenon. As long as the houses continue to go up in Trophy Club, which we all hope they do, it will continue to have to go down. And so, this is a conversation we will have every year unless prices stagnate in Trophy Club.
Every year, even at the 8%, we've always had, I would say, our backs up against the wall, we always had to do some maneuvering around financially to, to get us under the rollback rate, which is, as we talked about, majority of it's for the fire and trying to figure out how to make that work. With 3.5% that affects a little bit more, and it will, as Greg said, be continued staying every single year.
And, and let me say this, just to be clear, if you're grimacing, it's not because of anything you guys have said, I had foot surgery last Thursday, and every now and then I'll get pain because I've decided I'm not longer going to take the pain medicine. So, if I'm grimacing, don't take it personal, think I'm proud of what you're saying, it's likely a stroke of pain.
Okay, so drugs have been introduced into the equation. Thank you. So, do I hear, Bill, committee, Greg and Bill, you have a, your recommendation is to take it out of reserves? Did I hear that correctly?
That's what I would suggest. I'll let Bill speak for himself.
Well, I, I hate, you know, I hate to take, I hate to take things out of reserves, but you have to have, you have to have an alternative to do, and the only alternative I know is the one that I mentioned, which is, well, first of all, let's, let's begin with the fire budget. The rollback rate, the 3.5%, it says, your house values go up, the total amount of dollars you can then, you can subtract from the revenue or the total amount of dollars that you can receive from revenue of the value of the houses can only go up 3.5%. That means that your budget can only go up that, whatever that 3.5, 3.5% is. So, having that understanding, then it becomes a question of how you allocate that across. And we are tied in the situation where we have, like I mentioned, the two pots. We've got mud O and M, which basically is used to fund, if I remember right, legal audits. What was the third one, Stephen?
And nonpartnamental is your tax fees, collection for admin there, then you audit and legal.
Yeah, those, those three things. So, if, if you say, I'm going to fund the fire, I'm not going to take, I'm not going to get into the fire department reserves, I'm going to leave those set, if you say that, then, then your only option is, is to come back to the mud, to our site, I mean, mud mud, to mud MNO, those, those three items that Stephen mentioned and say, I'm not going to fund those via taxes anymore or as much of them via taxes, and I'll fund them to tax level that I can, but I'm going to take the, the remaining delta, whatever it is that I can't fund through taxes because I have to go to an election, and I'm going to have to increase something somewhere and get more revenue, which is, to me, my assured, assured revenue, I have two met, two, three locations of what I call, consider assured revenue. My wastewater, my sewer rates, because of the way they're calculated, are pretty much an assured income, the rates. The base, that's the volumetric. The base is also an assured income on that side of the equation. Then you have water. The base rate in the water is an assured income. The volumetric is not. And so, if you're going to increase rates and you don't want to gamble, you put it in the base rate. Just, it's, you put it in the baseline rate, it's like collecting a tax. You're going to get that amount. It's not going to vary on you and you're not going to have a chance, it's not at risk. So, that's, that's the way I was looking at it. So, the question for the board, one is, we wrestle with what the total budget for the fire department is, and we basically, through the agreement, the 99-year agreement, is the town does the budget and we can either, you know, we can talk with them, but we have, we can either accept it or deny it. So, we look at the budget, see what we can do there. They should be aware of the, of the, I call it the rollback rate, because that's always what it's been, the 3.5%. They're aware of that. So, yeah, I mean, if, if, if they, if they come across and say, look, I want, if, we need to increase the, we need to increase the fire department so much that it's going to cause a 5%, be, be 5%, then we, we can say, all right, we're just going to go to an election. All right, so we go, we go to, we go, we have a mandatory election, there are election costs granted, and then, Stephen, tell me what happens if the election fails?
It would go back to the voter approval rate, which is the, the max rollback rate.
The 3.5?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so there's, there's the other side of what occurs.
Which means that you have to cut operations somewhere.
Exactly. Or what you, what?
Tony's not trading in the G5.
No, he's not, he's not trading in.
So, I do want to say that the voter approval rate, which, you know, the, the old term of the, the rollback rate, you know, we, it can change, we go along, it's just, you know, hypotheticals and what I have right now, at least for the numbers. We'll talk about this in the next joint meeting here on the 30th, and options on there, and I'll know exactly what we're looking at number-wise.
Okay, because we'll need that before, this, this fire department budget, it basically gets locked, if I remember right, when we meet with the town, right?
Correct, so we would.
End of the month.
The council and the board will look at it and then make a decision, you know, to approve it based on any changes or based on the way it is. We have done this before. You remember a couple of years ago, we had an asset that we had to replace in the fire station, the exhaust system, and we did before out of our constitution or the fund balance of the fire station, that way it kept us under at that time the rollback rate. So, you have the capability of doing that going forward. I, I won't know the answers until the end of this week when we get some certified numbers in.
Okay.
Kind of a sidebar, please get a copy of the fire budget prior to the presentation. The first time we see it, I don't want it to be that night when he's presenting.
Okay. Well, we have, as, as far as, as of the, this week, this is the true fire budget, what you have here in front of you. This is everything, but the only difference is, is I show our expenses and revenue, so, including the fires. So, we have more information on this one. So, if you go down to our fire page, which is on page 202, you're going to be able to see everything they've given me, you know, all changes, everything's been made so far, on what's, what was adopted in 20, what's proposed for 21, and then where their projection the years to be.
Okay, I didn't realize that this was the, the latest and the greatest.
You just might want to confirm it because things have a way of changing.
That it does. I will, I will double check on it as soon as we get numbers in, and I'll make sure, before we go into the meeting, I'll, if anything's changed, I'll get that out.
Thank you. So, I think staff needs, so, so Bill, is your final, after listening to your perspective, what's your recommendation? Take out a reserve or add it to the base rate? So, the board, rest of the board can decide.
I don't want to take it out of reserves. So, your reserves are, your reserves at 600,000, Stephen?
Well, right now, there's 808 in the account. You know, we do have expenses that come up and fire is already pretty much 100% revenue, at least what's been budgeted for. Now, I do want the board to understand, you know, there is a true-up process also. The, the operations are done by the town, so I cannot tell you where they are 100% and where they're going to finish for the expenses for the year. I know where our expenses are and our revenues, have to rely on them to do a true-up. We did do a true-up last year and wound up getting 135,000 back for years 18, 17. So, there's a possibility there are some additional true-ups that can come on our end and, and increase the fund balance in there.
Do the true-ups go back into the reserve or do the true-ups, true-ups come back into our pocket?
It goes, you know, nothing goes into our pocket. I, everything goes straight to the fire fund balance. Nothing gets separated out, it goes straight in there and stays in there.
So, if that's the case, I guess, I'm, yes. Go ahead, Stephen.
Well, seeing what the true-up is, if you look on page 202, we calculate what the rev, the town collects, the, the expenses for the town, our revenue, our expenses, and I back then what we would owe in our portion to split the cost, and that's what we transfer over. So, this fiscal year, we transferred 718,000, no matter what the expenses are, we calculated, that's what we're transferring over here for the fiscal year. And then what I have for fiscal year 21, the same thing, 812, 812,000. Then, once they determine and let me know how much expenses were spent out throughout the year, that's how the true-up kind of comes back. It goes to the.
Do you have a best guess as to what that might be?
My best guess is the last column, that so far, if they, but like I said, expenses are not flat throughout the year, they, you know, some are a little bit heavier on the end. I'm showing, as of right, numbers that they've given me, I'm showing about a $465,000 surplus if nothing else was spent and all revenues are already being captured. We're at 101% captured in revenue, as if nothing else was spent at all. If you look at more expenses going forward, you're looking, I'm, I'm projecting about $24,000 in the true-up for this fiscal year. But that's if they were to continue on with the expenses, and this is just me making a guess, that's somebody else's financials.
So, the real question is, at what level are you comfortable with the reserves for the fire department?
So, when it comes to reserves, you know, if everything goes according to plan, you know, we, we budget 100% paid for by taxes and fire usually will always adopt a zero deficit and zero surplus. You know, sometimes there are capability where they might, the town might have more expenses in the operating side, and we'll have to do a true-up on the other way where we have to pay back the town for lack of expense paid on our end. We haven't had that happen before, but there is, the thing about the fire is, there is, there is expenses that happen the first three months of the fiscal year when there's zero revenue coming in. Fire tax is, is the only revenue source where they're coming in from there.
That's just a cash flow thing, right?
I'm sorry?
That's just a cash flow thing, right?
Correct.
So, I'm not as concerned about.
I have some operating behind for some operating during the time not collecting revenue.
So, let me, Stephen, let me ask you this question. Do we have $600,000 in reserves for the fire department? What number are you comfortable with?
Well, 600 is what I'm, it's going to be at the end of this year, barring no other true-up and everything stays, stays flat there is. You're still going to want to have several hundred thousand sitting in there for at least the first three months, or if we need to, we can work with the town about not making our transfers for the first quarter until taxes are coming in in January. That's more of a staff level, operations level on both sides, where I feel we can make that work and without being a issue.
I think the question he's asked you, Stephen, how much do we go and, how much do we spend before the tax revenue comes in? Just your best guess. Come on, you can do.
You do know I'm doing finances for another entity, basically, right? I mean, it's kind of hard to say on there.
He's trying to figure out how to qualify his answer.
Yes, he, he's looking of all the terms he could come up with, potentially, maybe, possibly, it could be.
Go out on the thin ice, give me a number where you think you're comfortable at. I mean, if you're comf, if you're comfortable with 450 as opposed to 600, then I'm with Greg.
I, I don't foresee an issue being to spend for this fiscal year, taking the, the needed reserves out. I don't see that being an issue for our working capital or operating at that time, of the fund balance. I don't believe it's a long-term answer to go forward for the next several years when we're going to have this issue.
I agree.
A, a mandate fix on there, I believe what that fund balance is there for, and we'll, I won't have an issue with that. If we come to an issue where the, the challenges have to know, we can't do a lot of expenses upfront, you know, when it work on our budget, you know, we got Mike and Frank and myself, and we'll work out, you know, make sure we have a lot of expenses when we don't have a lot of revenue coming in. Hard for me to control some, another government entity's budget in, in fiscal year on there, but I'm, I'm sure we can all be cognizant of it if we need to.
Worst-case scenario, we can write them a post-dated check.
So, having said all that, Bill and Greg, where are you at?
Take out a reserve.
If Stephen's comfortable, take it out of the reserves.
Well, Stephen's never comfortable, but yeah.
That is my recommendation.
Okay.
Wow.
Wow, strong.
Please, remember, we're still recording.
So, in, in order to keep this train somewhat on the. So in, in order to keep this train somewhat on the track, is there a motion that we need to bring forth, Mr. Rose, or, or Greg?
No.
No, it's just giving direction to staff, it just, it just tells him how to handle it.
Okay.
This, this is all information.
Perfect. Is there any further discussion about this?
Uh, what, not about this, but I, I went through the budget now with fine, fine line, and I'm gonna sit down with Stephen and talk with him about some individual line item issues that, uh, come across with like thirty percent funding, and we're, you know, thirty percent expense. Thirty percent expended at this point, and the end of the year, some of there's some balance issues I wanna talk with him about, so I'll get with, get with him. I don't know whether Greg is gonna be part of that discussion or not.
I, I do not.
Could I, can I drop off an extra, do you need an extra red pen in your mailbox, Mr. Rose, are you okay?
No, I, I think I still have one.
Okay. All right, if there is more discussion on item ten, let us move forward to item eleven. Consider to take appropriate action regarding interlocal agreement with the town of Trophy Club regarding sale and exchange of district real property located at a hundred municipal drive, fifteen oh one junctionway, and other real property owned by district. Mr. Rose?
I'd like to take this into executive session, I have a question for the attorney.
I would agree as well. Okay, that will be moved to executive session. And that gets us to executive session. So, executive session, uh, twelve, pursuant to section five five one zero seven one, the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board may consult with his attorney in executive session on a matter of which the duty of the attorney and the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional contact and of the state bar of Texas clearly reflects the Open Meetings Act, or to seek advice of counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers. A, contractor breach, performance, and payment issues related to districts' contract with Webber Gadawo, partners for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant improvements, and B, Trophy Club Municipal Utility District One versus uh, Acacia Services LLC, in the District Court of parent county, hundred and forty, hundred and forty-first Judicial District, cause number one forty-one dash two nine nine three five one dash one eight. C, potential condemnation of easements required for the construction and operation of water transmission line improvements from district pump station to elevated water tank located at T W King Road. D, uh, agreement regarding real property matters with the town of Trophy Club relating to the sale, lease, or exchange of real property assets. Thirteen, pursuant to section five five one dash zero seven two, the Texas Open Meeting Act, the board may deliberate to purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation and open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. A, sale, lease, or exchange, excuse me, of district property located a hundred municipal drive, fifteen oh one junctionway, and other real property owned by district. B, purchase easements or real property interests required to access, to, to access wastewater list station number one. And C, purchase of easements required for construction and operation of water transmission line improvements to the district pump to elevated tank on P W King Road. Alan, are you ready for us to go into executive session?
Absolutely.
And Steve, please announce the time.
I am going to announce the time, I was just looking for it, thank you, sir. It is eight forty-four, and we are in executive session. Okay, it is ten twenty-eight, and we are returning to regular session. There were no actions, decisions, or votes that were taken in executive session. Uh, okay, uh, coming out of executive session, consider to take action regarding approval of agreement regarding real property matters within the town of Trophy Club. Mr. Rose, I'll turn it over to you.
I have a motion. I move to approve the interlocal agreement with the town of Trophy Club regarding the sale and ex, or exchange of district real property located at one hundred municipal drive, fifteen oh one junctionway, and other real property owned by the district as revised at the D I S.
So Bill's motion, uh, regarding the interlocal agreement, to approve the interlocal agreement, the town of Trophy Club regarding the sale, exchange of district and real property located at a hundred municipal drive, fifteen oh one junctionway, and other real property owned by the district as revised at the D I S. Do I have a second? Okay, Mark, uh, Vice President Chapman's second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Oh, hang on, here it is.
Wilson, do we see your hand, or no?
You do not.
Okay, all those opposed?
I disagree with the second tweak on the, uh, to the agreement.
Say that again, Greg?
I said I disagree with the second tweak made to the agreement.
Okay. So, uh, motion passes for yays and one day, got that captured right, Laurie? Okay. Um, future agenda items, I think, do we have any future agenda items you wanna talk about?
Election item Tony just mentioned.
Yep. Laurie, were you, you weren't part of that discussion about, do we need to have any, um, as it relates to the vote coming up in November? Is there any action that needs to be taken, and Tony, you can explain it better than I can?
Let, let me, uh, discuss that with Lori, um, about that, just in, in terms of updating polling locations and some time periods in the original order for May. But I will coordinate that with her, and we will make sure it's on a, a future agenda, uh, and it's timely, in accordance with the Secretary of State's directive.
Have that information hopefully by the next meeting, which would be in time.
Okay.
Any other future agenda items that we wanna capture? All right. Uh, future meeting dates, we do have a meeting next week, July, Thursday, July thirtieth, a joint meeting with town council. And then also, our next regularly scheduled meeting, board meeting is on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty. All right, uh, hearing no other action, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.